Welcome to the December 14th meeting of the HP ARB of the Village of Sag Harbor. We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes unless there's any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. So, first on our agenda is the request to have the approval extended for 133 Jermaine Avenue. Is there anybody here to discuss it, or this is just an action we can take ourselves?
No, we approved two years ago, and she didn't do all of it, and she just wants to extend it.
Okay, so I will, I'll make the motion that we extend the approval to 133 Jermaine Avenue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Going to old business. Who is here to represent Sagbonn 261 LSC, 261 Main Street?
You guys have the updated plans after you've had your site visit.
Okay.
So, let's see, let's see what we did.
So, I was not a part of the team that visited because it was rescheduled for earlier than I thought.
So Zach and I met and discussed the kind of shutters and he had, which he, he brought in. We had already approved the color of the door before, these match the door. And I was there with Zach and he said that he felt that it was fine, so I'm good with it.
Are they Louvered?
They're Louvered.
Yeah, it's not clear here, yeah.
But it's not clear.
He changed it. He changed it.
It says.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make that proposed, the, for the proposed paint color and shutters.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. You're welcome. That's a pretty good presentation there, Yolanda. Okay, next is Robert Gibbs, who's representing 287 Main Street.
He hasn't submitted anything new, so I think we should just adjourn.
Okay. Okay.
I make a move that we adjourn 287 Main Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is what. So what did you give me here? We have an affidavit?
It's the fourteenth, right?
Okay, this is all part of the package. Okay. So, next is, who is representing 70 Glover Street? Anthony, please identify yourself, Yolanda.
Okay. Anthony Vermaelen, 68 Union Street, Sag Harbor. Okay, so this is the fifth time we've been before this board, this project, and I just wanted to maybe recap how we got to where we are at. We first came here as a discussion item on May 11th. That's when we were still working our way through the Sony Board of Appeals. The takeaway that I got from that meeting was that you were generally positive about the design that we had, that you recognized the challenges of the property, but the shape of the property, the fact that we have FEMA issues and significant health department issues as well. That's driving the height of the house. You folks recognized that we were proposing a significant addition to the house, but at the same time recognized that we were removing significant common store additions. So, based on that, I went ahead, I did a formal application for the Architectural Review Board, which was presented on July 13th. And that was also a full board plus stack, and I would say the reaction to that design was, which was essentially the same as what I had presented on the 11th, was generally negative. It was very negative. So, we did a little bit of back and forth about different ideas, different things that we can do. So I went back to the drawing boards. I came back on August 24th with a radically different proposal for the property, for the, for the design of the house. And I would say that the, this was also a full board plus stack. The reaction was extremely positive from all board members and from Zach, and I have quotes here, I flipped to the YouTube meeting beforehand, from all board members. I asked at the end, how, you know, how should we move forward? And Steve, you said the direction was good, great shot, come back for a formal presentation of what I presented. What happened in the intervening time was I had a prolonged family emergency, I, so I could not attend either the September or October meetings. I came back at the November meeting with essentially exactly the same design that I had at the August meeting. Just formalized into a formal application with dimensions, material notes, and things like that. And I would say at the outset of the meeting, the reaction was generally negative, which kind of had took me aback because there was such a positive reaction to that same design at the previous, at the, at the previous hearing. I, I think there was some question about whether or not it was even the same project that I was presenting, or if all the board members had seen it. But, I mean, I, fortunately, I say literally the drawings that I showed at the meeting on the 24th, and I have them here, so you can compare with them with the meeting, the drawings I have now. So, be that as it may, there were a few things that came up at the meeting, the November meeting, that we did take into consideration, and we made, made some changes based on them. One was to reduce the amount of, the amount of doors on the Long Island Avenue, the side of the house, really the number of door panels. So where we had four panel doors, we went to a French door with, with windows on either side, and where we had a triple door, we went to a, just a plain double, double door. We keep, we tweaked the back dormer a little bit, we lowered the ridge height of the addition in the back slightly, about four and a half inches or so. And so that is really where we're at with, with the house itself. At the meeting on the 24th and the meeting on the 11th, we haven't really discussed in too much detail, but we have addressed, addressed some concerns about the landscaping, particularly the late retaining walls that came up at, up at the July 13th meeting. Namely, we reduced as much as the health department requirements would permit, the height and length of the retaining wall. And that's reflected on the, on the site plan that's in the, in the application.
I'm sorry.
You share with nothing, I'll do with nothing. And, you know, I've done some of the things that we did, that we tested to do.
I would only say that, I remember that your first presentation in May, I thought that our reaction was negative.
That's what you said, you said that.
I thought you said positive.
That was in August.
I thought it was the generally, the discussion item on the 11th, I thought it was generally positive.
No, no, I think we were all thinking it was very, very large. And then, as I agree with your other interpretations of our reactions, except that the last time around, you were surprised, but I didn't think that we were asking you to change a whole lot in, in November. And it all, and all we wanted was a few little tweaks, I think, but you were taking it, yeah, you were taking it a little hard.
I think that was at the end of the meeting, it was just, I think, the initial reaction at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, you were, yes, I remember you were, you were.
Because I wasn't here for two cycles.
And you were taken aback, but I didn't think you needed to be taken aback because we, as you can see, all that was, that made us happy was that you did some doors and windows and made some things smaller and did some tweaks. So that's where we are now.
Thank you both for reviewing our history here.
Right, just wanted to get the story straight.
And I agree with you, I think we just thought it was busy before. So you want to take us quickly through this, and, or you think it speaks for itself?
I think it speaks for itself, but I mean, I have everything here, so I can kind of take you through quickly. I mean.
Quickly is fine.
This is the, this is the front elevation. You know, really, the only changes in the front elevation are the, the changing of the dormer that exists to a shed dormer. Zach, you and I had a discussion on that meeting on the 24th about whether or not shingles or fibers were appropriate on the front. I think the discussion was either would be appropriate. And so we were going with fibers on that front facade.
You're, you're on which sheet?
I'm on A5.
A5, okay.
I'm going through. Then, I think the, so the Long Island Avenue side of the house, this is what we, I think, have most taken from last time. Previous versions of this had six over six windows for the new part of the house. We've gone to two over two, to make it a little, little less busy. We've reduced the, the size of the doors, but added a couple of windows here and there. We tried to break up the dormer on the second floor a little bit as well, which is four windows spaced out, sort of free windows together, also shortened it slightly. And as mentioned, we lowered the roof ridge. And then, I think the other thing that might be of interest was just what we did with the retaining wall.
Is that, is that on your landscaping?
Yeah, that is on that's one, I'll get to it. This, this is the septic system, this is what we're kind of dealing with here. What we did do though, was I had the, originally had the retaining wall going out all the way to a point here. We realized we didn't really need to do that, so I just, just chopped it off at the end here, so that, that shortens, shortens things a little bit. Also, the height of the wall, I think, you know, just, just to clarify, this is not like one of those tall retaining walls, it's going to be two foot to two foot six above grade, so you know, it's down like here.
What are you retaining?
It, it's basically, we have to bring the grade up.
Oh, so you didn't fill in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be, we're going to have to bring in, I mean, construction wise, we're going to have to bring in a lot of fill, and it's really, it's not so much the FEMA issues that are driving it, it's the septic system issues.
And the house in turn goes up.
The house goes up too.
Yeah.
Will the house be the same in terms of its elevation above grade? Will that be the same as it is now?
Yes, it will. In fact, that was something that came up very early on in this discussion, and that's one thing we were able to do, is that that existing original front part of the house will have the same relation to the new grade that it does now.
Great.
And the wall is made of brick?
Yeah.
What kind of brick?
Just a regular. I need to mention to plant that out as well.
So brick veneer is real brick?
Uh, yes.
What was?
It says brick veneer. And I, and I asked if it's real.
The structure will be concrete, right, but it will have a brick veneer.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Right, okay.
Brick veneer.
So, um, anyone have any comments or concerns, or?
I feel that Anthony has done his best to please us, and I think I find it acceptable.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I remember being happy at the August meeting and just needing it to come on paper. So, yeah, I'm glad to see it on paper, and I'm keen.
So this is a challenging site. One thing that was left out is I think that this, this addresses the concerns of the neighbor.
Yes.
Right, who was concerned about the massing and that sort of thing.
I know the homeowner was speaking with the neighbor, and she was actually kind of surprised that we hadn't passed yet, because we've, we've really worked with her too. Concerns.
All right, so there were a lot of things going into that, that multi-faceted presentation, multiple presentations. I would be happy to, to make the motion, thank you, to, to approve the design as it is. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, the only thing that's not clear here is, is the landscaping, and, and you'll, you'll use some native shrubs and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I think I have that, that's specified in the drawings, but yeah.
Okay. I don't see it, but. Okay, while we're waiting for this, who? Oh yeah, Marston Street, who's ever presenting Marston Street, please come to the podium and identify you, yourself, as.
So I'm recusing myself from this application.
Because you're making fourteen.
Because I'm actively outspoken. Oh.
Sorry, I just heard what you asked me.
Here's to see if it's the same.
It's just the one house on the. My house on the left-hand side, it's behind the corner of the house.
It's next.
That was going to be a park. Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's next door to Dr. Offenheimer. It's all by itself.
Right, it's all by itself.
Across the street.
Right, right. Welcome. You're welcome.
My name is Denise Sharn. I'm the attorney for the applicant here tonight with counsel, Dr. Danin Moody. With Namita Modi, our architect from, also in the audience is one of the property owners, Pat Tronzo Jr. You may remember, we were before the board in November of 2021, first round of applications. At the time, seeking your feedback on three different properties, 12, I think 15, and nine. We're here tonight just for 12, which is the one property, there's one property on one side of Marston, the other rest of the properties are on the other side of Marston. As you know, after that hearing, the property owners and their, the family went and spoke to the municipality, the school, and talked about preserving the lot, having the lot purchased for preservation and/or for the school district, and ultimately that came to a public vote and was turned down. So we're before you again tonight with a revised application, just on one of the last 12 Marston. So, this property.
It's like it's on the street.
It is, well, it's on the, yes, it's closer to Marston.
On the other side of the street.
This, this is the one, the property that is on, as you go, if you leave the high school and you come down on the right away, it's not at, right at the corner, but it's right behind the corner house. It's not down the hill, it's on the left.
It's on the left going to Madison.
It's not part of the four.
It's on the left going to Madison, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It isn't.
Not this one. I mean, this one could be whatever. It's.
All right.
Can you, can you show us the site plan? Because I looked at it the other day, and I, yeah, okay.
So you're looking at this place, actually has the landscaping on it as well. The proposal is for two-story residence of 5,285 square feet, located 33 feet around Marston, and with a detached garage that's connected by a breezeway, that's pushed back on the property, also to reduce the massing scale, the visual massing scale of the street. And behind that, fully screened, is proposed swimming pool patio and a closed pool house.
So can, I'm sorry, how big is the house right now?
5,285 square feet, which is a reduction of.
I suppose.
About 11 square feet from the version that you saw the last time.
Okay.
Does that include the garage, the footprint?
It does.
That's every side.
Where is the driveway?
So, on this, what, it's right here. I don't know if you can see proposed.
Can, now, oh, I see, yes, it runs along that hedge.
Yes.
On the inside of the hedge.
Come in here.
Okay.
Here's the parking spot, and we're out right here.
Do you have the dimensions on the lot, just out of curiosity?
I do. The lot is 0.76 acres, so it's large for the, our design, which is 3/4 acre. It's, these are last, really, uh, sort of, we're setting the good precedent. Our building coverage that we're proposing is 4,000 square feet. It has been almost 5,000, committed, building coverage is 6,000 square feet, about 2,000 square feet, permitted lot coverage. So. Is 7,348 square feet, I'm sorry, permitted lot coverage is 8,276 square feet, we're proposing 7,348.
So this was there.
We, we've also studied the vegetation on the property. As you know, this was cleared, and grew, cleared, regrew a couple of times, in 2016. So this is all regrew and overgrew. A lot of it is invasive species, but we did have an inventory. So, all of the large, larger caliber trees, 12 inches or above, that were native, we had tagged to save. There were only three of them, but we couldn't save two for practical reasons, I think the third, because it just wasn't doing very well. You guys, before, you guys can just be careful with the microphone.
That's what I was apologizing for, yeah, thank you. Okay. Right, so let's take us through the visual part, the facade, please.
Do you want to start with the building plan first, or you walk through the, building plan first?
We don't need the floor plans or the interior.
Right.
So, do you want to talk about the elements?
Yes. I'm Namita Modi.
Hello.
Hello. Need to see some of you again. Wow, okay, I'll talk to them. So, these, these are the elevations of the house, and I wanted to point out a couple of things that we did. We heard from you last time in 2021 that the house was looking too big. To make it look smaller, generally, the board at the time liked the appearance and the aesthetics of the house. So we kept the aesthetics, and we listened to you, and we made it smaller. We made it not only smaller by 1,100 square feet from the previous iteration, but we also made it look smaller, and I'll show you how I did that. So this is the, this is the front elevation of the house, and the front door here. This is a shed roof that's going across this entire front over here, and nothing here is over 16 feet. And this is what you see at the 33-foot setback in the front. So we're allowed 20 feet, and we moved it back to 33 feet. This is at 33 feet here, but it's low, and then it sets back in here, and I should show you the renderings to really kind of, you'll get a better sense of the rendering. This part back here is another 12 feet behind this. So, the larger massing of the house, which also we made shorter, it was 33 feet 6, I believe, last time. Now we're at 30 foot 10 above existing grade. We've raised the grade two feet. So, that height there is that 30 foot 10. But all these elements you see in front, we broke them downs to make them look a little bit smaller, and the massing looks smaller. So, one of the comments you made was, it's like, you know, very much in my face, it's like a lot of, a lot of glass, a lot of glazing. So, this was one way to attempt to do that. I'll talk about the glazing as well. These two gable ends here, they were much wider in the previous iteration. Now we are looking at a little, like 70 feet across all the way from here to here. And both of these massings are much smaller, they're only 17 feet wide each, and then the middle is like another, like 36 to 38 feet. But again, like I mentioned, this area is set back 12 feet behind the porch and the entry. Everything is a, is a pitched roof here. I think in a previous iteration, we had some flat roofs. Everything is pitched, and it's, and it's recognizable, it's something that people could, would be familiar with in this interpretation of sort of the farmhouse aesthetic. These roofs are 11 and a half by 12 pitch. This roof in the middle here is 6 and 12, again, 11 and a half by 12. And then we have these little shed roofs, and the shed roof going across, the little shed roof over here, those are 3 and 12. And then back, way back where the garage is, that's another, that's a 6 and 12 roof. So I wanted to illustrate, even in elevation, to show you that we, we broke down the massing to make the house look smaller. And we also reduced it by eleven hundred square feet. Regarding the glazing, um, I think our previous iteration, which I should probably show you.
Yeah, I would love to see the.
Yeah, we have it here in the rendering.
Yeah, I thought you might.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna put over here a large portion. So basically, you're seeing them from almost the same angle, right? So you'll see that our previous iteration had all this glazing and, and this flat roof going across and these bigger masses, particularly this one on either side. So what we did was we cut this whole area back so that the tallest part now of the roof sits back, like I mentioned, almost forty-five feet from the property line.
Can you just put that up there?
Yeah. Do we have another? Okay.
It looks, uh.
Yeah.
Up top.
Yeah.
I like this design, uh.
And, and other things that we did, as I mentioned, um, less glazing. So I think, um, Janice gave you the numbers on the glazing. We've reduced the glazing particularly on this front facade, which is the north side, um, quite a bit. And you'll see that it's, it's a lot smaller, a lot less. We've reduced it, uh, I think by four or five percent or something, uh, from twenty-six to. Oh, from, from twenty-three, twenty-three and a half to like nineteen and a half percent for the front facade. But overall, the whole house is also smaller, so, um, so you have to take that into account as well. The other things that we did, um, that are a little bit different, um, uh, well.
Is, is the, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The people who are watching this remotely, can they see this? Cause I'm just seeing Harry, so I wasn't sure that they.
Yeah.
The other TV.
Oh, the other TV, okay.
Yeah.
So this is what it looks like now, as I mentioned. We also made the, an attempt to save as many existing trees as possible. And we also added other trees like the sugar maple, um, um, what all the other ones were.
So we have a, we have a row of green giants.
And a row of green giants on.
For privacy.
Yeah, that's, I'll show it to you here. So, so we added this, um, sugar maple and we added, um. A river birch. And then we saved all of these trees from our previous iteration. We didn't, we didn't have those before. And then you'll see that we continue with the green giants across the driveway here on the, on the west side. And then back here along the east side and then all the way around.
You're not clo, you're not putting green giants on the north side of the front of the house, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
Talk about the materials.
Yeah, um, the materials. So if, in our last presentation, um, you generally like the materials and the look. So we sort of repeated the materials. This is seven inch, um, V groove hardy, um, siding, hardy plant siding. Um, and then what you see, I think maybe I should show it to you without the trees, cause.
In white, right?
In white, yes, and then the areas that are in, in, and that color is actually called, uh, farmhouse white. So it's kind of like a softer white, it's not like a stark white. This is another view without the trees, so you can kind of see the house. And then these areas here that I mentioned in the, in the low section, this is, uh, nine inch hardy, um, siding, um, as well, going across this way. And, and it's like in a, almost black, that's the color for that.
So is that vertical or horizontal?
This is horizontal, everything that's in black.
The siding is horizontal.
Is horizontal and everything that's in white is vertical.
Oh, the white is.
Wait a minute.
The white is vertical, yeah, can you see it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, not at this distance.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, it, you can see it here on this, this is vertical, kind of a.
Rotation.
That's a.
There it is. Yeah, just the angle.
Yeah, it's hard to glare.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I'll mention a little bit about the windows also. The windows are Marvin Ultimate Double Hung Windows. Everything that you see on the facade is a double hung two over two window. It sort of echoes a little bit more of the traditional, um, types of windows that you would see in Sag Harbor. The only place where we do not have double hung windows, you're not going to see them, is in the light wells. And I had to make them casemate for egress.
Does the board want any, look at anything in particular, the pool house, any?
I have a question about, um, the renderings. Both of those actually are from different angles and they make one of the, um, sections, the, the two sections that match on the end. They make them look like they're not the same size. Are they the same size as each other and the same shape?
They are the same size, just the window configuration, I think it's just the angle, but if you look at.
Okay, yeah.
They're the same.
So they're exactly the same as each other with different windows.
Yes, they're, they're seventeen feet across.
Mm-hmm. I, I think it might add interest if they weren't exactly the same. But that's just.
I, I tried to do the fenestration differently to make it different. And then, and that was one way that I was able to reduce the square footage because this one on this side was originally out to here, maybe even bigger. And I was able to reduce the square footage by just creating an, an area with a shed room and that for, for, um, for a particular thing that had, you know, that was part of the program. I didn't need that area above. So what I'm doing is I'm basically hugging the, 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 the sides of the white part of the house with these lower shed roofs, um, and, and porch-like structures.
If, if, if I made the front elevation by way of fenestration creates the asymmetrical aspect of, of looking for.
Yeah, the windows are asymmetrical, the, uh, but the, uh, the basic shape is symmetry.
Well, just, just the leaves are the same, but everything. And then you also have this piece here sitting in front of this, which changes the way it also appears. As well as on this, on this side here, you have, um, this second floor part that sticks out in a, with a shed dormer. And on this side, I put it on the ground. Of course, all this is, serves a function, it's not just aesthetics.
Inside, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, that's a standing seam roof.
It's a standing seam roof everywhere, all the roofs have standing seam.
Painted black.
Like a dark gray.
Dark charcoal.
Like dark gray, yeah, it's not shiny.
And the, how about the garage, is that also that kind of roof?
Yes.
And the pool house?
And the pool house, the pool house is like a very miniature version of this. It's, it's mostly white actually though, and we have the same, the, the, the double hung windows, black. I don't know if you.
Do we have a plan of that yet? Do we have a plan? You'll see that, right, guys?
Do you have any real samples of the color, uh, the, the, what do you call it, farmhouse white or something?
But it's not, it's not a bright.
So it's kind of a flat, is that like a semi-gloss or high gloss?
Yes, not just a flat, but.
Do you want me to say anything?
No.
Okay. But you see, it's very, it's similar, it's the same kind of aesthetic and within the two hundred square feet that's, that's allowed. And similar roof lines and.
And, and the kind of pool that is, it is, is, uh.
Is it gonna?
Yeah.
The, um, the little notch of land that, that kind of protrudes out. I guess that's the south side of the lot.
Yes.
So, so are you gonna put green giants there also? My only concern is.
This is that south side.
Right, right.
Yeah, those are all green giants.
Okay.
So they're behind the house and the pool, yeah. And, and we also planted some dogwood.
Okay.
I think the aesthetic of it is, is appropriate.
Yes.
Challenge is that, is, this is such a big lot.
Right.
That it automatically, you know, um, evolves into a larger house than is typical.
Right.
For the historic history. But that's a a reality of the piece of property. So I, I think scale of this is, is kind of well managed. I mean, it could obviously be considerably larger and look much larger and still be compliant with the code, which is separate issue, separate discretion. But all things considered, it's all part of it.
It's all part of it.
So I feel just architecturally, historically, the forms, the pitches of the roofs, the, the basic symmetry of the fenestration, but with nice variations throughout that, uh, kind of minimizes the impact of it visually.
I would agree.
And also, as, as you described, that, that you can step the front facade back through means of several different sections which are re, are receding as you go up. And I think that's, that's a positive benefit.
To that point, I think, I agree, I think it's a creative design, probably, particularly the step backs.
Yeah.
And, and, um, you know, we get a lot of complaints or concern from people who are used to houses that were designed with eight and a half foot ceilings, right? And, and so they say, why are the houses so much bigger? Because the architectural style has changed and. So, so this is a nice way to, to kind of have, have addressed that, cause you're still reaching a, I don't know, ten, twelve foot ceiling height, but, but you're doing it in such a way that it's not, uh, overwhelming, I think. Judith, you have any thoughts?
Yes. Considering it's Sag Harbor and it's in the, that particular part of the village where it's not only the historic, uh, district, but it is full of smaller houses mostly. I, I find that, that it's a bit jarring that there's going to be a very, 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 very large house, although I appreciate that you made it smaller. And it's, again, what is becoming a cliche with these new houses is they're all painted white and they have black trim. It's like everywhere you look, oh, that house, that house must have been built in twenty twenty-one because it's white with black trim. And so I would hope that they, we could somehow be a little bit more original. I, and I can't tell from your rendering, um, but the landscaping in your rendering looks very suburban. You know, it could be in Mineola. Great sweeping lawns, which are not good for the environment. Neat little trees with neat little circles around them. Again, not, that's just suburban to me. And I, so I would hope that you would make an effort to landscape with, um, with native plants and, um, the plants that attract bees and butterflies and, and birds and so forth. So that is my feeling. Otherwise, it's fine.
That's a list, uh, Bethany, do you have any comments?
I would agree with what Zach said, and I do agree with what Zach said. And, um, I, I know that we'll have to have a public hearing, so that will be the next step. And then we'll, uh, after we, you know, they've heard what you've brought up and we'll see what happens at the public hearing.
And Michelle.
Close in time period. I, I will, I haven't been around for a long time, seen a post-modern house and some, oh, somebody was making, somebody was doing okay in the eighties. As a architect, so wanting to stay away from that, uh, and wanting to, to hear what you're saying. From a material, being, being direct from a material or color point of view, do you have, I know it's not a cheap design house, but I, I sent you up something in mind, from a material or color point of view, could you, could you?
I have, I actually, I actually don't, but I, I would prefer just not black and white, maybe a subtle color on the trim, I don't know.
Or gray, maybe.
Yeah, or a light gray or something like that.
Yeah, um, just because there's so many of these white houses, black trim now. And, you know, at some point, somebody's going to go through and get rid of all the white and black and it'll be different and that'll be fine. I mean, a sage green, I don't know. Sage green, trim. Whatever, uh. Something unusual, I don't, you know, something makes it just make it seem it, like it, it's an individual, some, an individual owns it, not a corporation.
I understand fully. And from a material point of view, would you?
Um, no, I don't have any suggestion.
Thank you, that's extremely helpful.
So I have a question to the architect. If you did the hardy board horizontally as opposed to vertically, when you see a long line, it seems, as opposed to horizontal, is that something that you would take into consideration there? I'm just saying, a vertical line emphasizes height, you know, as opposed to something horizontal.
True.
Why don't we take a look at that?
If, if it were like a very, very tall house, I mean, it's, it's not a very, very tall house.
Relative to its neighbors, it's a very tall house.
Right.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And when you look around Sag Harbor, that's a tall house, except for the Captain's Row area.
You're asking if we would consider making this a horizontal
Right.
to like help it feel a little bit lower.
Right.
Sure.
Right. Anybody else have any thoughts, anything to add? Okay, um, so we will, we've given you our thoughts and we'll see you at a public hearing. No, we, we, what we want, we're not so concerned about the current state, but we'd like you to do as much native as possible. Okay, and, and, um, as, as Drew says, we, we want to. Okay, and and um, as as Judith says, we we want to. I've been coming to Sag Harbor all of my life, and when I used to get here. My father's car was covered with bugs, I don't see bugs anymore.
Right.
And and so we're trying to create habitats that can can kind of regenerate. Because they're they're, you know, a central part of the ecosystem, so um. With that, we just hope that you'll put that in the landscaping, you know, native and 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 uh butterfly gardens almost.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thanks, girl.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is who's representing number five, Washington Avenue?
So we need to um.
We need. Thank you, Bethany, you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion for for a uh public hearing.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Uh.
Welcome back, mate.
Represent you as much as possible.
Yeah, I heard you.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Sharon, here to present uh five Washington Avenue. Um, I was for the board approximately six months ago, um. We uh had a discussion item through through the uh concept, um. It's a whitey log that would be simply inside. Several holes around the gate that were also like similar sized with a construction, um, and this is.
So so take us through, um, I'm assuming this is the front?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, everybody has copies, okay, so why don't you take a set of these and take us through, describe what you have here?
Sure.
Do you need it?
How about this, you want this, you have a copy of this?
I do have a copy of that. It's a traditional um white house with black trim. You know how that's gonna be. And quite frankly, I I would have no problem with coming back uh with another color variation. I I I happen to agree, I happen to agree.
Great.
Uh, it's a little bit of a long wrestling match. So um, if you have any guidance as to what what are some of the colors that you that you like.
You know what's there now, like, you know what's there.
No, I don't really know what's there.
We don't, you do you have any, you have a photo of of how it how the house looks like now?
I don't, because there's, oh, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
What what's there now?
It's a one story uh home, the footprint is. Uh, such as the same that that I'm that I'm building, um, but the house.
Oh, yeah.
Now is.
Okay.
But, oh, is that is that the is that the picture?
Yeah.
Just kind of a ranchy kind of thing?
It's not a, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a little hard to see it.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. But, yeah.
It's shrouded from the street.
It's on Washington Avenue, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the uh the current owner or the prior owner had not really uh taken care of it and had rented it out to um one of the restaurants and.
Okay.
It was the 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 neighbors were were not really thrilled with the uh.
We got it.
The occupants, they were annoyed at night.
Mm hmm.
Um, but anyway, um.
And and I, the well, how about the landscaping, is there a land, just because in the photo you can see, you you hardly see the house.
Sure.
But here, of course.
Okay.
The question about landscaping, um, this this required a variance build and um CBA had asked me to provide. Uh, uh, some, uh, I don't remember the exact species, but a lot of the uh. Western portion of the house, we were we are acquiring and will be planning uh. One is a design.
Is this one?
Uh, no, that's the east side of the house. So that's the eastern portion that runs along uh Washington Avenue. That 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 the uh photo that you just hold up held up is right.
No, the rest is.
So work with the variance, uh, the variance was to go two stories because it's it being a corner property, um. Required me to have two ton yard setbacks, so I'm trying to believe uh on or for one of the front yards. Along Washington Avenue to be given essentially side yard, side avenue instead of a second front yard. Form some pyramids, we didn't we didn't ask for, we leave there, we didn't ask for.
Okay.
If they was just purely for.
So we would need a landscape plan, right?
Mm hmm.
And uh because there would appear not to be one.
Right, there's not one here, the package.
So we need that, um. I mean, I think the material, I think the materials, and I mean, uh, you 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 wanna change the color, you said, so. That'll be something that we would see differently and um.
But the what kind of windows are these, local apartments, are they one over one? Two over two. The center bar sort of concealed with the window treatments. Visual, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't show. But if you if you.
You can see.
You can kind of see it, yeah.
That's dial out, nice drapes.
Oh, there.
Right?
Right.
So it looks like you're using a lot of PVC, um, is there a reason for that?
Mainly for the durability, um.
Hmm, it's a, um, what kind of house, it's not a stick, is this a stick built house, like, it is, okay.
Um, I think you're um the train, yeah, some of the uh group work and and teacher boards. May or or side to go versus tax, really just for the durability.
Do you know the um current structure's square footage and what your structure's square footage is?
The.
I can't read it.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I can see.
Existing dwellings thirteen forty and ours will be thirteen seventy.
Oh, okay.
Mm hmm, but much taller. Yeah, it's it's a history house.
Could I offer up a couple of thoughts?
Uh, yes, like, please.
But just because this is, um. It's one of these challenging projects where you're designing a new house to look like an old house. And that gets into some fraught areas. And ironically, where I I feel aesthetically where it's most successful is where it misses the mark. So it doesn't look like an old house, it looks like a new house, which it is, and. Board is not terribly receptive to building replicas. Sag Harbor has tons of big people by the house, so we don't need a new one. You know, and we don't need a really good replica that sort of pretends to be that, because that's misrepresenting what it is, so all of this is sort of. Strange area, but I still think that aesthetically, uh, some things could just read better. I find that that where you have that, what I would call a pent roof that stretches across from the base of the eaves.
Mm hmm.
Um, which is admittedly a very modern, I don't know, at least for this neck of the woods, that's still such a strong. Architectural element that I've and 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 it repeats in your little stoop over the front door and in the. In two extensions to the to the side, those big wide horizontal bands of roofing material. Uh, so it's it's this thing, it's this thing, it's this thing, and it's this thing, all of that. All those strong wide bands of roofing. Look sort of excessive to me, they're just just not aesthetically pleasing, you can return them back, so in other words, you come to the foot. Then you return them back a bit. But but your attic wall is on the same plane as the first and second stories, is it not, it doesn't receive. So you don't need roof.
Sure.
At the base, you don't need a roof here to cover where this is behind this.
Right.
This, these two surfaces are the same, so this is artificial, this is decorative. We're gonna ban the roof image, you're just stretching it across the front, okay, but I find it un. You know, although it's not historical, so it checks that box, but I just feel that and then it's emphasized here and here and here. And I think this would be better with this came down aesthetically, architecturally, came down and returned, it didn't carry a festival front.
So I think Greek return, is that what it's called?
You'll have to talk to your architect, I don't know what his expression is, but I'm just saying that's kind of an excessive use of that element that. It it makes it all look more cluttered in a way, especially against down the side where it happens twice on these smaller elements.
Sure.
So I think the house will still read as a new, as a new structure, which is what you want and and. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be mistaken for a historical building, but I think those elements are just excessively. Uh, overstated, I just have a thought, which is I'm overstating.
All right.
There there um, one comment I'll make about that is there is a house uh across the street that uh I believe follows that, it's great. So we.
It's an old, it's not an old house, it's a new house.
It is a newer house.
Yeah, okay, I don't know.
And um, we just.
You were following that?
No, we wanted to differentiate ourselves a little bit.
Okay.
But but I I could uh show you a picture, I think it's exactly what you're describing, I just didn't want to mirror.
I see, okay.
What was going across the street, but I'll I'll try to present that when I come back.
Sure, it would be an easy.
And with the different colors might help.
Yeah.
So I I'm not familiar with PVC siding, um, like you're suggesting, but I'm gonna say to you that um. Cementitious sightings last a very, very long time. Um, extremely long time, I I have a seventy year old house and.
It's hardy plank.
It's hardy, okay, so where was the PVC that you were going to?
It's a soft.
No trim.
Trim, right.
Softly trim.
You know. Yeah, PVC veneer over a wood post.
But maybe window casing.
The trim. Maybe like, can we just do without the PVC veneer and like embrace wood?
Is that to preserve it, I guess.
Sure.
Or, yeah, with the hardy.
Yeah.
Does hardy make something like that?